I'm gonna mind the agenda.
Okay.
This is the...
I'm going for one. I'm going for one.
Oh, sure.
I gotta meet somebody in front of my...
Okay, that's done. So she said just do it all this one and we still abstained. Exactly. So we have two votes still.
Yeah, you guys could just improve the consent agenda that day.
Yes, she had to fly to DC to work. Twenty cents an hour.
I've never heard of the national...
You? No. Yeah, so I don't think they have... They've really been bringing the onslaught because I got that at home. And then there's been like full page ads and sending these articles, which is not cheap. Ooh, that you should.
Do your thing, no pressure.
So who's the sergeant? That's not sergeant, which are...
I need somebody at seven, because I gotta go home.
Because there's another guy.
Yes.
And that was just in fact, this guy.
Yeah, you know, I'm afraid we missed a field. It was a fifty-five yarder.
I was saying, I think it was long.
And it hit the upright way. I mean, it was... And the game was essentially over and I'm just saying with pain. That's not even a sentence. In the scheme of things.
It wasn't like the soccer player that missed a twenty-five yarder for Nebraska.
Oh, he's not a soccer player.
I thought my husband said they picked him up.
He hasn't played yet.
Oh, okay.
Tell him they're still holding. I can't kill play this week. No, this was the guy who's from Norfolk that brought him in. He was at Air Force.
Hi, Jackie.
I do remember them saying so.
It's funny, Brett, Brett, Brett. Where was Conrad?
Yeah.
He was good on the making. Just so low.
Now, nobody.
And I was like, oh.
And then I got a penalty and moved him back.
Yeah, watching golf.
Yeah.
I put a golf star in.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I need real.
Your homecoming. Times we had to be innocent.
Oh, yeah. Did you go?
I watch this fast. Call the meeting back to order. Stand with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice, will. Moving on to item number five on the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meeting held September ninth?
So moved second.
A motion on second. All those in favor of approving of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Didn't have anybody to address the board this evening. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, the good news report. Thanks, Steve.
Good evening to all of you. Tonight, we're proud to host Senior Marine Corps Instructor Lieutenant Colonel Brian Harwell and two of his cadets from the Lincoln High School JROTC program. They recently learned of a very prestigious designation earned by their unit that sets them apart as one of the top twenty percent of units in the nation. For the first time, they've been designated as a National Naval Honor School. They're here tonight to tell us a little bit more about what that means to the unit, and then the students will tell us what that means to them personally as well. So, Lieutenant Colonel.
Thank you, ma'am. The esteemed members of the board, good evening, and thank you very much for having myself and two of our finest cadets here tonight. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about designation of National Naval Honor School. It is, as Ms. Conrad said, a very prestigious award within the JROTC programs. It's based primarily off of numerous volunteer projects. This last school year, we racked up accumulation of over nineteen hundred man-hours of volunteer service within our program, as well as over sixty community events in terms of things like color guards at sporting events, Augustan University, and other community events throughout the greater Sioux Falls area. In addition, we had numerous ROTC scholarships, as well as general scholarships for college. So grades and academic criteria account for a lot of our standings, a lot of the percentages that went into racking and stacking of all the schools. So the bottom line is, again, as Ms. Conrad pointed out, we fell in the top twenty percent of approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-plus Marine Corps JROTC units throughout the nation. And it is the first time in the nineteen years of our program's existence that we've had this highly esteemed designation. So I'm gonna stop talking at that point. I turn it over to a couple of my fine cadets. First of all, Cadet First Lieutenant Harley Robinson. Go ahead and come on up here, Harley, and they'll let you know what it is about the program that they're enjoying the most.
As Lieutenant Colonel said, I am Cadet First Lieutenant Harley Robinson. I've been in the program for now my fourth year. I'm a senior. I joined the program originally because I wanted to be a police officer, and I stay in the program for that reason, but also for the reason that it's an amazing family. Like Lieutenant Colonel said, we do a lot of volunteering, and a lot of it, and it's a lot of fun. We also do color guards, and we also hang out with each other, which is how we're a family. I'm involved with color guards, air rifle, and drill team. Do it all. I also do out-of-school activities such as police explorers and other things. Anything else? Yeah, I mean, we're a family. That's what it's all about.
Cadet First Lieutenant Riley Dinger.
Again, as Lieutenant Colonel said, I am Cadet First Lieutenant Riley Dinger. I am the drill team commander for our unit. I originally joined the program four years ago because I was so interested in the aspect of drill and being able to march in a disciplined manner. I stayed because, like Robinson said, it is a family. Everyone gets really close with each other, and we enjoy knowing that you have a friend that you can look forward to that isn't just a name, it's a brother or a sister. I am also in drill team, I'm in color guards, and I'm in the rifle team now this year, and it's one of my best classes.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just would like to commend, I love going to school on Wednesdays and seeing everybody in their uniforms, and I saw the, I believe, the rifle team perform last year at the basketball game. Was that the rifle team, I think?
Yes, ma'am.
Last winter, and it was amazing, just the timing and everything and all the dedication and time. So thank you for all you do and making our school just proud.
Your leadership shows because they're a great group, and there's nothing better than watching you guys perform before games or at the associated school boards. You guys have done the color guard for us a few times, and it's very, very impressive. I'm impressed with you guys, impressed with what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. One last thing, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the extremely hard work. I'm just the pitch guy up here in his second year of this program, but the heart and soul that's been behind this program has been my Sergeant Major, Sergeant Major Scott Backen there at the school. He's been there for the past sixteen. He's going into his seventeenth year now, and he is really kind of the formulation of everything. This is the culmination of all his hard work over those years, as well as, of course, the cadets. And one last final welcome and thank you to our new principal, Dr. Laura Rader. She's, ever since I met her since day one early on in the summer, she's given nothing but one-hundred-and-ten percent backing to the program, and it's really nice and refreshing to have that sort of support. So thank you.
I just wanted to add, I think we sometimes forget about extracurriculars such as this program, and when I listen to you all stand up here and talk, your confidence and your clarity is amazing. And that you don't just get overnight. That's something you guys have clearly worked very hard at, and those are skills that will serve you so well in your future. So are you both seniors, right? You said you're both. So I just imagine the great things that you guys are going to go on and do, whether it's your police officer interest or whatever it might be. I think the communication and the confidence and just your poise will take you a long ways in your future. So best of luck to both of you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Moving on to conflicts of interest, we have one presented for Board Member Tulkey. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion on second. All those in favor of approving the conflict of interest for Board Member Tulkey signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with one abstention from Board Member Tulkey. I should also mention Board Member Parker this evening is traveling for work, so is unable to attend. We move on to item number ten, approval of the consent agenda items A through E. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion on second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda number ten, A through E, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll take items A and B under eleven together since Board Member Parker is absent on the supplemental consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
On the second?
Second.
The motion on second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with two abstentions from Board Member Mickelson and Board Member Ryder. We'll now move on to reports of the superintendent.
Thank you. Tonight's reports, first of all, our first report is the two thousand and nineteen state accountability report. Here to deliver that report is our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Teresa Boyson.
Good evening. Good. Good evening. Thank you for listening to our two thousand and eighteen-nineteen school board report, our state accountability report that was released on Tuesday, September nineteenth. Our state report card shows our progress across the state on equal accountability measures. When we look at our report card. So. Thank you. Technical difficulties. No, I'm kidding. It just shook up. There we go. Got it. Student outcomes. District strategic plan. It follows under student outcomes, district priority area one. Statement one, we will provide a rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum for all students to emphasize growth and reduce the achievement gap. That state report card, as I said, was released last Tuesday from the Department of Education. It follows under the ESA guidelines, ensuring that each district is measuring student growth and progress equally across the state. It's designed, the report card's designed to be parent-friendly, engaging in their child's education while providing transparency on how well that school's doing in educating all students. We use multiple measures when we look at that report card. The smarter balanced is used for English Language Arts and Math in grades three, eight, and eleven, and Science for grades eight, five, and eleven. We use a multi-state alternative assessment for those students with significant cognitive disabilities, and then we use the WEDA access for our EL learners, our English Language learners. On that report card, on that report card, there's eight different categories that are highlighted for the district and for all schools, and tonight I will share some highlights on that report card. Each school, elementary, middle, and high are scored on a hundred-point scale system, and that gives them their school performance index, and that looks at areas of progress in English Language Arts, Math, English Language learners, it looks at that college and career readiness at our high school level, and it looks at our attendance rate. Those are some of the highlights. So if we look at student performance. We had a presenter in here today. I'll blame that on them. But if we look at student performance, overall, the district is doing well. Remember, we have ten percent of our students that are English Language learners, and we get five years to get them up to proficiency. And so we broke out the student performance data into an overall district score as we compare to the state, and then we pulled out our English Language learners and looked at our district performance and compared that to the state. So on the left side of your graph, you'll see that English Language Arts performance, and all students scored at fifty-point-eight percent. Of those students were proficient. And then, as opposed to the state, the state had fifty-three-point-nine percent of their students, of the students proficient across the state. If we pull out our English Language learners, the district scores at fifty-five-point-two percent of our students proficient, and the state scores at fifty-five-point-four. So the state with two percent English Language learners and the district at ten. So really, we're right there at that state performance, and we did the same with math. And when you look at that math performance, all students are at forty-four-point-three percent proficient as compared to the state at forty-five-point-seven. Again, pull out our English Language learners, and we're at forty-eight-point-five percent proficient as compared to the state at forty-eight-point-six. So outperforming the state in that area, math, and really close to that EL performance, ELA performance. And then we'll look at student progress. And student progress is a three-year comparison. So we take that growth of our students over a three-year time, and we know if we have our students together for three years, we can make a difference. And this is all student data, so it's not, we didn't pull out our English Language learners on this data, but we're at fifty-eight-point-three percent of our students are making progress or growth in English Language Arts over a three-year period of time, and the state's at fifty-eight-point-one. And we look at math, we're at fifty-one-point-seven percent proficient and fifty-one for the state. So nice growth at that progress over time. And well, our next area is graduation. And that graduation rate, when we look at graduation rate over the last three years, so since two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, it's increased over three percent. So we have that nice increase, that gradual increase over time, and the completer rate has also increased. But on the slide there, it shows you the graduation rate over the last four years, and that this year, we're right at the state level at eighty-four percent. Last year, we were at eighty-three-point-eight-five. And we're still working with the state on some student appeals, student by student, to make sure we get everybody the credit that's earned for them, and we're expecting that to come up over eighty-four percent by the end of the assessment office. The poll works really hard with getting dug in the fall to make sure we get every student accounted for. The next area is college and career readiness, and that college and career readiness, we get points in two different categories. We get, on the left side of the screen, you see that assessment readiness, and assessment readiness is comprised of the smarter balance results, the ACT or the Accuplacer, and then the NRCRC. So students have to be proficient in those measures. On the left side is that coursework readiness, and students need to have two credits in the same CTE concentrator or a dual-credit class or an advanced placement of a score of a three or higher. And so for each one of those, we get a half a point. But to count in that college and coursework readiness final score, we have to have the students count in both buckets. And coursework on that assessment readiness score, we had, we're making, we stayed steady on that assessment readiness score, and these scores are for our two thousand and eighteen graduates. So not the kids that graduated last spring the year before. And so we expected to stay on course there, but through the year last year, we implemented the NRCRC assessment, and we expect to see that hit our report card next year. And so we would expect that assessment readiness score to increase. And we put the projected score there at the end of, we have forty-two percent of our kids assessment-ready the last two years, and we would expect it to be up in the high fifties next year just because of that NRCRC. We picked up over two hundred students through that assessment, and we'll give that, that was through seniors last year. We'll give it to juniors this year, and that's coming up.
As is the fall now, instead of spring, which was a good move.
Yes, yes. And that was an ask from the buildings, and it is, the fall is a good time to give that assessment, so it's not packed in with the rest of them. And then on the coursework readiness, we had forty-four percent of our students coursework-ready, and we increased that score to fifty-two percent through this last year, just really identifying how those courses are coded within that state system. And remember, to get that coursework readiness, they need to have a dual-credit course, ACT, and then they need to have, or two credits in the same career cluster, and there are sixteen career clusters, and we have a rich offering in Sioux Falls. So if I take something in construction and something else in culinary arts, I'm not getting two credits in that same career cluster, but I have a wide variety of experiences. And that's where we have to really wrestle with ourselves and say, do we want to get the points or do we want to allow kids to be well-rounded and have that exploratory experience? And I believe that's the direction that you have given us, is that we want students to be able to have those exploratory experiences to really see where their passions are. So we continue to work through that, though, and to make sure that we have all the opportunities that students need in that college and career readiness. And next, we have our English Language learners. Our English Language learners have five years once they come to us to become proficient. And last year, during the eighteen-nineteen year, forty-five percent of our EL population either exited or were determined to be on track, and that's a fourteen percent increase over the previous year. And that slide shows that we had twenty-nine percent of our students on track in seventeen-eighteen. In this last year, we had thirty-seven percent of those students on track, and then met expectations they were either on track or exited, and we increased from thirty-one percent to forty-five percent. So nice growth with our EL students in our program. And the last slide tonight is that school environment, and that's our attendance. And when we look at that attendance and really looking through that information, we noticed third quarter last year really took a dive on attendance, and so we would say that was probably the weather last spring. And statewide noticed the same decrease in attendance. So we just really watched that, and hopefully, we're just gonna smooth right through that third quarter this year to increase that. And every building is rated on their report card, and there's different designations with that. And last year, through ESA, they made those initial school report card designations. You could be a comprehensive support school, and that would be any Title I school that is in the bottom five percent. You could be a targeted support and instruction school improvement, and that's any school that has a subgroup that's performing below their all-students group or an additional targeted support school, and that would be somebody that's on a plan for multiple years. So through that report card process last year, Sioux Falls District had eight schools that were identified as targeted support and improvement. And we look at that report card, and through that report card, this last year, three of our schools came off. They're still designated, but they cleared their report card, meaning their subgroup that was identified. They increased their score, so those report cards were cleared, and we had one additional school go on for targeted support. And we give them support through the curriculum and assessment office, and the state also provides some structure with that. So lots of support for those schools. So preliminary data shows that Sioux Falls School District is continuing to show strong academic performance on the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen accountability report card. Graduation rates increased for the third consecutive year, hitting eighty-four percent, so a three percent increase. English Language Arts and Math, when compared with the Bay student population, were outperforming the state in that area. We showed growth in college course readiness with an increase of eight percent. And our EL students who exited, that are on track, was fourteen percent over the prior year. So the report card looks good for Sioux Falls. We'll continue to monitor all those areas and provide feedback to you with our progress and support. Standby for any questions.
And thank you for adding, I had asked Dr. Boyson regarding what we do for the schools that are designated as TSI, and I appreciate you adding that information into the report. I think that fourteen percent increase for our EL students, that's amazing. And plus, is that the same time the WEDA score was increased by point five at that time?
The year before, yes.
So I mean, there's a higher exit point for those students, so we are meeting that. So congrats to our staff and the students who worked so hard to get that accomplished and so forth. And thank you also for, with the NRCRC, I think that we'll really see a huge increase in our our college or preparedness of our students and so forth score, and moving that to the fall was very smart because I just remember when my son took it at senior in the spring, I'm sure he was about to be out of there. And so to put it for the juniors, so then they can still be thinking about, you know, if they wanna go, what they wanna do, if they wanna go tech school, they wanna go college, if they wanna go to work, give some more tools in their work box.
We even had an employer ask for that, so that was great for the kids.
Good progress, and I would echo what you said about having to have two classes from the same cluster really is an unfortunate measure. When you look at the number of classes that we offer and the wide interests of our students, like you mentioned, some may be interested in tech school or the workforce or college, and so to try to pigeonhole somebody into taking two consecutive classes that are... that are, you know, in that same cluster, I think really is a disservice to our students. They may find that they didn't enjoy the class that they thought they were going to and want to take a totally different pathway. And they should have the ability to do so and still earn credits towards graduation. So, I fully support not trying to force that type of a direction on students and letting them have that, that free will to really select the classes that are of most interest to them. And we'll take the hit if that's what it means. And we'll still work on preparing them as best we can for life after graduation, so.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions or comments. Do you have a motion to approve the 2019 State Accountability Report?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now the CIP update, please.
Okay, the second report this evening will come to us from Jeff Kreider. But before I turn it over to him, I want to talk, take a little bit of a bird walk, if you'll allow me to. It was the night of the tornado. And I would tell you that at 1:22 a.m. that morning, I called Jeff Kreider and said, can you help me look at the roads? And I know Jeff didn't sleep the rest of that night. And I know he worked the rest of that day. But what a lot of people might not have known is, into the evening on Wednesday night, we didn't have power at three district buildings. And so, Jeff didn't sleep very much, I think about two hours that next night. And still was tremendous at his job at work. And I think a lot of us think we, we go above and beyond and we do. Jeff Kreider went way above and way beyond what the expectation was. So, Jeff has been a, has been a star in the district. And I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thanks to Jeff and to have what, what he did. He would see it as just, had to do his job. I see it as just absolutely meaningful work that our district needed, and, and you came through, so.
We have a lot of partners that were part of that solution.
No doubt, no doubt we do. No doubt we do. But I know where the point person is, so thank you, Jeff.
I know my contact at Excel worked through that whole night. And he was out in the field, and we were directing people to places, so.
Well done.
So.
Now, you can give the report.
Okay. Well, my, my report tonight is going to be a little brief, and it's, it's more about hiring architects for the next phase. As you know, we've, we've got the, the high school moving forward. We have the middle school moving forward. We've completed Memorial. So, now we're moving forward with several projects that will be started in the next couple of years. So, these four projects, Forest Man, Laura Wilder Cleveland, and JFK, these are kind of bigger projects that we really don't have an architectural record. So, we put out an architectural RFP for these projects. And so, we're, we're moving forward with these. But Forest Man, just so I have an idea of context of the schedule. Forest Man, we're looking at bidding, you know, working on the design this fall and bidding January, February, March. Laura Wilder in the same timeframe. Robert Frost is also in that timeframe, but we're going to be doing that in-house. But they'll be, since we did the last three projects at, at Robert Frost. So, we'll be doing that. And those three are the ones that'll be bid this year as part of that overall plan. Cleveland is part of this. We're going to start the design after the first year. We've got to stagger this so we can get these done. So, I have some time to devote to those. And then John F. Kennedy will be bid on December, probably maybe November of 20, December 21, somewhere in there, or 21 of November and December. So, that's, that's down the road a little bit, but we're going to get the design going and get that ready to go. So, anyway, the report, we did issue a RFP for these projects on August 9th. We solicited an RFP by advertising, web postings, sending out to 16 local architects. The proposals are due on September 2nd, and we received 10 proposals to review. The eval, an evaluation committee represented the district evaluated the proposals. We looked at the following contents, and that was required specifically in each proposal. And we viewed, and that was project approach, experience and qualifications, personnel experience. And that's so we know who's going to work on our project, so we don't have a, a firm that just comes in with all these projects, and we don't have anybody that's worked on any of those projects associated with our project. Make-up of consultants, that's structural, mechanical, electrical and civil. Project experience for the, for the, for all the consultants and the firms, and project schedule and plan, and also fees. So, those were all important parts of this. And after review and evaluation, man was, TSP was selected with a fee of 5.5%. And that's percent of the construction cost. That way, we can bring things in if we have maintenance things that we want to schedule with. We're doing the walkthroughs now, so there might be a couple of little things we add. Laura Wilder Elementary is EA PC. We have not worked with that firm, but they, they look good. Their fee of 6%. Cleveland Elementary is Coke Hazard with a fee of 5.25%. And JFK, John F. Kennedy Elementary, Architecture Incorporated with a fee of 5.5%. So, the, the fee structures include all architectural and engineering services required for the project. And the fees are in line with what's in the estimates. They're actually a little lower than what's in our estimates. So, we're on a, we're starting on a positive note. And these four projects are, have been identified and are part of the bond that was passed in 2018. So, this report, we're going to, we're going to ask for authorization for the President Business Manager, Business Manager to enter in the contracts for the AE services for these respective projects. I just wanted to mention, next month, we're going to Technology Willing. We're going to hopefully have Ben do some flyovers, so we'll see a drone flyover of the construction site, and I can explain what's going on and, and give you an idea of what that is. And maybe get some pictures of Memorial completed project as well. So, that's our hope. And I know Deanne will be in the background if I can't quite get into it. I think we will. So, he did, he did one initially about a month ago, and it looked pretty good. So, he's got a pretty good drone camera. Things are progressing. The rain we had slowed us down a little bit. But as of last week, everything had dried up, and people were proceeding pretty good, so. Then another update we'll be having is we received most of the bids for the Jefferson that were yet to come in in Phase Three. And we're reviewing those end of the middle of this week. And my initial thought is they, they all came in pretty good. So, we'll give you some updates on that later on that. So, once we get a firm grasp on it. But I think everything is trending very well.
Could you just, high level, remind us of what we're doing to these four schools? I think sometimes people forget that as part of the bond, it wasn't just a middle school and a high school. And so, when we look at all the different projects going on, we, we have Memorial finished, but high level.
High level?
Yeah.
Forest Man will be adding classrooms. So, for more capacity at Forest Man. And we'll also be redoing the office area for security. Laura Wilder, we're going to be putting in an elevator and some offices. An elevator and a staircase, that's about all. And we'll be putting that on the backside of that building. Cleveland, there's a lot going on in Cleveland. There'll be a new gymnasium. There's a lot of dominos. The, the multipurpose room that we have now will become the art room. The, the old gymnasium will become the multipurpose room, and there's some dominos. And we, we plan on doing window replacements and some of those things as part of this project. So, the playground will be reconfigured. The whole piece will be starting to come to shape. And there's a lot of dominos. That will probably take place over two summer periods. There'll be construction will be moving in during the school year in some of those areas, and there'll be some dominos. We haven't really sat down with the building staff yet to discuss how that's going to all phase. So, there could be little tweaks of that. But we need to coexist, very similar to Mark Twain. When we had Mark Twain running, we built a new school on that site. So, there'll be some challenges that we'll have to overcome, maybe do some temporary playground areas for him during that, during that school year. And JFK is a, a new gymnasium. There'll be in that, I don't know if you know where the east parking lot is. We'll expand that, turn their existing gymnasium into the multipurpose room, turn the multipurpose into a, a music area, so that's out of a classroom pod. Then we're going to convert that into a standard classroom. So, there's a lot of dominos to both of those. But Cleveland, by far, is the most complicated and impacting of all of us.
Great changes, though, to adding space to the buildings and giving staff and students more room to do some of the activities like in the gymnasium.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second to acknowledge the results of the RFP process and authorize the President Business Manager to enter into contracts with the selected architectural and engineering firm listed above with the respective building projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Cheryl.
Well, I don't, I, motion, I didn't say the motion. Okay.
I would like to move that we go on to the executive session. South Florida Quarterback Law 1-25-21.
Second.
Sorry.
Thought I forgot some.
Scaring you, wake you up.